Good evening, everybody. It's six o'clock. It's our final meeting of the year, and I would like to call this regular meeting of the Lansing School District Board of Education to order. Will everyone please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? We'll just start it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thanks, Sam.
Hey, we do it all here.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
You're muted, Lynette.
Your apologies. Dr. Beverly?
Should have been a big red.
Dr. Body?
Here.
Dr. Burrows?
Here.
Dr. Hodgeon?
Oh, great.
Is she here?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, that was Ms. Hodgeon. Mrs. Lawrence?
Here.
Mrs. Lilge?
Quaker Nation. Okay.
Mr. Lopez. Mr. Lo-- okay, I see you. Dr. Rodriguez?
Quaker family.
Mrs. Willis?
For one night only, I will be a big red.
What?
One night only. Present.
Okay, the Panther--
Make sure we're recording today, okay? Just make sure we're recording.
Panther-- Harry Hill Panthers are here and quorum present.
Thank you very much. And I see that Mrs. Lilge has come to play, and I like it. Give me a minute, everybody, if you would.
Mrs. Benavides is trying to be added to the panel.
Yeah, I'm getting her.
Can you make me a co-host as well, please? Sam, can you do that? Or does Jeff need to do it?
Oh, yeah, I can do it. Just say it. There you go.
Okay, thank you. We do have one special public comment this evening who did not pre-register, but we're going to let that slide. In honor of Dr. Brian Beverly's final board meeting, as Dr. Beverly did not run for reelection this time-- there he is. Now he's back. Dr. Beverly, did you hear what I was saying? Okay. We do have one special public comment, so Mayor Shore, please take it away.
All right. I can't see myself, so I have no idea what you're seeing, if you're seeing anything. But I did want to comment in my first public comment since you guys went to the Zoom format. But I wanted to congratulate Dr. Brian Beverly. You know, Brian, your service has been tremendous for the city, for our kids, including mine, both who are in our school district. You've been a good friend. You've been so helpful to me in understanding not just education stuff, but all the Invest Health stuff and all the other things that you work on. You give me incredible advice, so I'm still planning to tap into that even-- I figure you have more time now, so I'm still planning to tap into that. But-- and you'll be getting a letter in the mail from me and the city. But on behalf of myself as a dad, on behalf of myself as the mayor of the City of Lansing, I want to thank you for your incredible service. It'll be tough to see you go because you're such a great voice on this board, but I'm really excited for everything that you have in your future. You've got a little more gray in your beard than the last time I saw you, but you're looking good. And I appreciate it, Madam President, for letting me join in special public comment. Hi, everybody. Haven't had a chance to see you all in a while. It's really good to see you all. Hopefully sometime we'll get to see each other in person. But Dr. Beverly, congratulations, good luck. Thank you for everything you've done, my friend. Really incredible work, and I wish you well.
Thank you so much, Mayor Shore. It's been a pleasure. Looking forward to continuing to collaborate with you and the city moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Shore. I know you've got a busy night, so you can head out whenever you need to. Dr. Beverly, I'm going to let you talk a little bit later on this evening, but I know we have a full agenda to get to. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Sinicropi.
Thank you, President Lawrence. I hope Mayor Shore is still on here because I saw another talent that he had today. And I was going to mention it later, but I'll mention it while he's still on. He can throw a mean spiral. He was out playing with kids at the Foster Community Center today, and he was getting a workout. And I just want you to know, he was-- all the kids and the mayor were masked up and socially distanced as much as you can on the football field. So he does have skills that we were not aware of. I wasn't, anyway. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. That was-- by the way, thank you all for partnering with the City of Lansing-- I'm sorry to jump in again, Madam President-- thank you all for partnering with the City of Lansing. The Learning Labs have been such an outstanding success, and you all are to be credited. You really took on the initiative to put these kids at computers. You worked with us. I was at the Lansing Housing Commission this afternoon, and you worked with them. I had a guy who came up to me who said, "I'm a dad, and my kid is there, and it lets me work." You all have been incredible. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I didn't get a chance to say hi. I apologize, but I was throwing touchdown passes, so I was in the groove.
Thank you, Mayor Shore.
Okay. Thank you, President Lawrence. We have two presentations tonight. The first is our second monthly presentations from our COVID-19 collaboration team members, which are our school nurses. And I would like to introduce, to start with, Ms-- oh, there she is-- Ms. Erin Darnell.
I'm going to share the presentation here.
Erin, would you like some help? Or did she freeze on us?
There she is.
Would you like some help?
There we go. I'm sorry. I apologize. Was I muted the entire time?
Yes.
Okay. How about take two? Good evening, everyone. I'm Erin Darnell, school nurse here in the Lansing School District and a member of the COVID coordination team. I'm going to be sharing the monthly COVID information with you tonight. And just of note, this data is from December 11th, so it's just from earlier last week. Unfortunately, as we have seen across the state and the nation, COVID is continuing to take hold in our community with Ingham County reporting nearly 11,000 cases. This represents a steady increase over the past four weeks with a significant jump in the weeks following Thanksgiving. The number of positive cases reflects the average number of positive cases per 100,000 people. This metric, too, reflects a jump from last month. Michigan overall has grown to 65.2 cases per 100,000, and all three neighboring counties have risen as well. Eaton leads the way with 60.6 cases per 100,000, followed by Clinton County at 52.6 per 100,000 and Ingham County at 47.900,000.
Erin, I'm sorry. It's Sue Wheeler interrupting. We're having trouble seeing the PowerPoint, so I wonder if maybe Cordelia could pull it up there? Otherwise, we'll just go through the talking point. Yeah.
If I am not-- I don't have the ability to share, so I have it up.
I can do that. Hold on just a moment. Okay.
There we go.
Okay. So you can see it and hear me now? Are we two for two?
Two for two.
Okay. So here is the number of positive cases that I was discussing per 100,000 with the respective counties-- Ingham, Clinton, and Eaton there. The positivity rate reflects the percent of all people tested who are positive. In Ingham County, nearly 12% of people tested are positive, Clinton counting about 9% positivity. And Eaton County has about 14% positivity. The incidence curve provides a visual representation of the case curve. This upward trend represents the growth in cases over the past month. This was expected, following the data regarding Thanksgiving travel and work to be done regarding convincing our communities to resist family gatherings and social events. The recent MDHHS directives and declining impact from Thanksgiving over time seems to have slowed the growth rate over the past few days. Unfortunately, the second major holiday break is on the horizon, and cases will jump again without significant mitigation efforts community-wide. Last month, in our presentation, we provided data regarding race and ethnicity. This data has remained consistent with both our Hispanic and African-American populations disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. We are also mindful of the impact of COVID-19 on the pediatric population. In Ingham County, the number of children ages zero to 19 who have COVID-19 has grown to almost 2,000. In similar counties of Clinton and Eaton, there are 493 and 354 cases, respectively. The science is emerging regarding the impact of COVID-19 on children, with some becoming seriously ill or suffering long-term effects months after COVID infection. Children with underlying health conditions seem to be particularly at risk, although even healthy children have experienced significant symptoms. Did you know wearing masks saves lives? Although there have been a lot of debates about the need to wear masks, the science is clear that wearing masks saves lives. Wearing a mask decreases the risk of getting COVID-19 by about 70%. Even cloth masks decrease the wearer's exposure to COVID. Masks are not a substitute for social distancing. They must be used together. Cloth masks are inexpensive and reusable. They should be washed after daily use or if they become soiled sooner. We know that two-to-three ply masks offer the best protection. Almost anyone can wear a mask safely. In the event that you're unable to wear a mask, we encourage you to stay home and keep yourself and others safe from COVID-19. Last month, for the tip of the month, we talked about celebrating Thanksgiving safely. Unfortunately, many people did not take that advice to heart. The serious rise in COVID-19 cases has largely been attributed to social gatherings and holiday travel for Thanksgiving holiday. With several holidays just around the corner, we want to stress the holiday tips again. Celebrate only with the people you live with, no exceptions. Choose virtual celebrations with all non-household members. Many platforms, such as Zoom, are easy to use for some people and free of charge. Always wear your mask, social distance, and practice hand washing frequently. Lastly, this is the time and the season to practice kindness and patience as we hold on through this once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information and your patience as I work through it. We look forward to updating you next month. Are there any questions at this time?
I'm muted.
Okay. Two for two. We have a second presentation tonight from Ms. Sue Wheeler. She's got just two slides she's going to show us, and I wanted her to do this. It was kind of a last-minute thing because it kind of flows into what our Beyond Screen-to-Screen Committee report is going to get into tonight. So Ms. Wheeler, are you all set?
I hope so. We'll see. We'll see. Well, thank you, Erin. That was a great introduction here. And as we continue to monitor and manage the COVID-19 within the district, we're working closely with the Beyond Screen-to-Screen Work Group, which is chaired by Dr. Chapman. The Work Group asks that we create a COVID metric document to inform return-to-in-person school decisions. So that's the document I'd like to share with you now. Okay. And-- so I can no longer see you, but I hope you can see my document. Yes?
No.
No.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, here we go.
Eric, here it's coming.
Let's try it one more time. There we go.
There we go.
We knew we could do it. You know, this would be the only silver lining of the last nine months is that we've all learned new technology, new skills, that maybe some of us never really wanted to learn, but we have, and so we move forward. This is the COVID Metrics Dashboard that you see here, and it was developed to identify relevant science-based data to be used to guide the fundamental decisions about returning to school. The nurses reviewed Public Act 149, Section 98A, which most of us could now recite in our sleep, which is the fundamental framework for the required extended continuity of learning plans, which are regularly submitted to the state. We also looked at neighboring districts and those with longstanding reputations for innovation and science-based decision-making. We identified four objective metrics and then the category of other considerations to include the factors that are specific to the Lansing School District in addition to the simple numbers that we can gather. The metric dashboard that you see here is a visual representation. The first category you'll see on the top there is trend. This is the number of new daily cases. This is a required metric that specifically identified in Public Act 149 to be considered by each school district. The target for this trend-- in other words, what do we want to see happen with this-- is either a downward trend or a trend that remains low and flat. This is a metric that's viewed over 14 days. The risk level definitions would be in the next column, and it would show you a downward trend is the right direction, a flat is low, and then an upward trend would certainly be the wrong direction. This column to the far right is where we're sharing our data sources. This is where we're getting the information, the recommendations for this data, and decisions about how to choose the data come from the groups you'll see listed on the far right. The second category is new cases per million, and this is reflected as a seven-day moving average. The target there, you'll see, is the aim of seven active COVID on children and what do we know and what can we do to keep them safe. So this document will be used as a framework to monitor weekly numbers and trends that are provided by local, state, and national public health agencies. The data will then guide the work of the Beyond Screen-to-Screen Group as critical recommendations are made, with the first goal being the delivery of curriculum and programs while ensuring the health and safety of all students and staff. The metrics dashboard provides standardized data points to guide that decision-making while encouraging exploration of other considerations which specifically impact our school community. So we thank you for letting us share the metric dashboard with you and hope to use it, and you'll be seeing it weekly with numbers attached.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. We really appreciate that, all the work that you-- the nursing staff has been doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have one more presentation. This would be Dr. Chapman's Beyond Screen-to-Screen Learning Committee, and she will refer back to--
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much and good evening, Board of Education and Lansing School District family. The Beyond Screen-to-Screen Committee, very happy to come before you this evening with an update. As Nurse Wheeler shared, we have been very collaborative and extremely scientific and data-driven as we move forward, have discussions regarding our plans and what we'll need to do for a safe return for staff and students in the Lansing School District. This evening, it is our purpose to share what our accomplished tasks have been. During our first update, we shared with you that we divided ourselves, so we definitely divided and conquer by the development of four different focus teams. So I have four very specific accomplished tasks from those teams. First off, through our Alternative Models Focus Team, we were able to successfully launch a staff inquiry instrument, which basically is a fancy way of saying that we surveyed all of our instructional and support staff and administrative staff across the district the week of November 2nd. With 1,038 respondents, those responses indicated that there was a 50-50 split for those who wish to remain 100% virtual versus exploring the possibility of alternative models through hybrid instruction. Led by Nurse Wheeler and assisted by Nurse Mary Beth Braddock, we also developed a COVID-19 coordination team who collaborated, as you can see on this evening, and provided and created for us as a district an exposure response document as well as a metric dashboard, which has really been guiding our decision-making thus far and will definitely be a large component of what we do beyond screen-to-screen. Additional accomplished tasks come from our mental health supports and staff supports focus team. Through that particular team, led by Executive Director Suzie Corbin of Human Resources and Cordelia Black of the Office of School Culture, we were able to implement for staff, students, and caregivers methods and measures to address mental health and social and emotional stressors, address those that are very relevant to the pandemic. And finally, our fourth focus team, Special Populations, led by Associate Superintendent Dr. Kamala Diaz and our Executive Director of Special Populations and Community Gaugement, Mr. Sergio Keck. Through that focus team, we have been able to consider and explore continuous and innovative means of providing both education and support or services to our most vulnerable populations, which includes our students with IEPs. Based on those accomplished tasks, we are ready to move forward with an actionable timeline. The first point of our timeline is this current update that we're presenting on this evening to the Board of Education, which will be finalized and accompanied with a recommendation. On tomorrow, we will launch through social media outlets and through our district website, the Metrics Dashboard, with additional communication to staff and to our families on guidance and instruction, how to follow and how to engage with the scientific data that will be reported through our COVID-19 Collaboration Team on a weekly basis. After winter break and upon return, the actionable timeline becomes even more specific and realistic. The week of January 4th of 2021, we will survey through a family inquiry instrument our families, our parents, and our caregivers, asking their-- and looking for their response in terms of what appears to be a best-fit interest for their child or children as it relates for a plan to return safely to face-to-face instruction. At the conclusion of the Family Inquiry Instrument, so about two weeks or so, we will begin having, as of January the 15th, continuous collective analysis from our Metrics Dashboard and through our various means of collecting data so that we can further begin to plan and look very seriously at the safest means for return to face-to-face instruction for our staff and for our students. Based on the outcome of the analysis of those metrics and its associated data, not later than January 29th, we will begin looking at and continue to collaborate through the executive team and the Beyond Screen-to-Screen Committee, along with and accompanying new committee that we are embarking on, very specific to planning for a return. We will have a logistics-driven return mechanism to further plan out a timeline of return. One thing that I would like to emphasize, the Logistics and Metrics Focus Team that worked very closely with Nurse Wheeler and her team. When we look closely at what would be a probable timeline just for planning a return, that timeline would take anywhere from four to six weeks to best outfit our schools logistically for a safe return. So based on the work of the Lansing School District Beyond Screen-to-Screen Committee and with direct emphasis on the insight provided to us by our COVID-19 Coordination Team, the Beyond Screen-to-Screen Committee, with support from the executive team, recommends that the Lansing School District remain 100% virtually until such time that it is safe to plan and execute a plan for our staff and our students to fully return for face-to-face instruction. That concludes our update for this evening, and at this time, we will entertain any discussion and commentary.
Dr. Body, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for all your due diligence, as always. The metrics that were presented are metrics that are standard, very easy to agree with. I do want to encourage the team, however, to consider-- once, as we're thinking about going back to in-person learning, to consider the differences in data between the transmission rates between younger kids and older kids. So the data is pretty convincing, and I can actually share a link in the chat momentarily. But the data is actually quite convincing that children ages zero to 10 spread COVID-19 at rates about 50% of adults, whereas children between the ages of 10 and 19 spread COVID-19 at rates similar to adults. So as we begin thinking about phasing back into in-person, I think we should begin with elementary-level children. And then we can phase in middle and high school as the vaccine becomes more prevalent and readily available. But part of any data-driven approach to reopening should include reopening the elementary level first and then phasing in the upper levels and the older kids later. So I'll stop talking and I'll send that link to you guys in the chat here.
Dr. Beverly.
I just wanted to commend the committee and all the subcommittees for their work. It's been a labor of love in a lot of ways. The fact that everyone has demonstrated such compassion for students and families as well as, as staff, as we make preparations towards coming back. I just want to thank everyone who has played a pivotal role in this committee work and looking forward to participating in another fashion moving forward, but recognizing that there's a lot of tough decisions still to be made. But I think that there's a structure in place for those decisions to be data-driven, but also grounded in making sure everyone is safe and healthy. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly. Mrs. Willis?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you to Dr. Body for that additional information. I'm really thankful to have someone so close to this information, helping us make this decision. A couple of questions. The first one is, Dr. Chapman, can you tell us a little bit more about the family inquiry instrument? What does that look like? What is, what can families expect will be the process for that rolling out in January?
Sure, we can do that, Ms. Willis. So the data that we're looking together, there are some families who have already expressed that they, you know, irregardless if we begin to phase back in, they're wondering if we would consider still having an online option. So that is definitely a question that will be embedded in the family inquiry instrument. In addition to that, based on the alternative models that were researched and then narrowed, that would be a best fit to our school communities, an explanation of what those models look like in terms of hybrid and having a combination of face-to-face and online instruction, along with the full face-to-face capacity and all of the requirements and the definite safe practices as we return. Those scenarios will be embedded in the family inquiry instrument. In addition, we also would want to know how many families would be extremely dependent on transportation. Based on the guidelines that we currently have in place through the My Safe Start Plan, there are specific guidelines that we would have to have on our buses. And so all of, all of that data, Ms. Willis, will help us to begin planning. And ideally, it definitely is going to be the driver when we make a determination of staffing, staff that would be needed and willing to continue in the virtual setting versus the number of staff that we will definitely, definitely need to execute both hybrid instruction and then eventually face-to-face instruction.
Thank you. And will that survey be online through social media, through robocalls, letters? How do we plan to engage our community?
Sure. Just like we have done with the previous instruments and the exact same mechanism that we utilize for the staff inquiry instrument, we have the capability through our synergy management system to actually to push that survey out directly to our families, and it's pushed out through our technology department. Ms. Benavides, if you wanted to add any more specifics on the timeline and how we actually push that out and collect that information, feel free to do so.
We do use an Office Microsoft Word 365 form, and that's kind of the best form to use is it will kind of analyze the data for us when it comes in. So it's a, it's a really neat way to see the data as it comes in over time. The data that we use, we do push out through our synergy system, and we have actually found that our families best respond when we either text or email them. And so those will be really the two mechanisms that we use through synergy. We will push it out to any email that is part of their direct contacts. So if they have one for mom, dad, and so forth, it will generate it out to all of the different contacts that are within our synergy platform.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And I was asking because I know this is something that's very critical for our families and parents to want to be involved in and care providers. And so I just want to make sure that we had a great way to try to access that data. My second question is, looking at the metrics on the dashboard, how many, if not all, how many of those metrics have to be met or trending in the right direction before we may recommend return in person? And is that something that we're still deciding as a committee? So I'm curious if three of the four metrics are met, would we potentially go back? Is it going to depend on what those metrics are? I'm just curious a little bit more about that process.
Sure. That's, that's an excellent question. We are still in the process of determining how we will actually, on a weekly basis, review and what the considerations are with the metrics. But to have a very scientific and medically acclimated response, I will defer to Nurse Wheeler.
I think these are the questions that we're looking at right now when we have the metrics in place. It would be unlikely that you would say, well, if you have one of four, you know, we'll move forward. These are really viewed as fundamental metrics that must be met. But it's the work of the group that they can, you know, make firm decisions about that. But we have it narrowed down, and as Dr. Body points out, these are very standard metrics that are used across the state and really across the country as fundamental data points that must be met so we can feel that we're bringing kids back safely. And Dr. Body's point too about the children transmitting at about 50% of the rate. This, when you look at the section that said other considerations, that was one of the points there, looking at that data for the zero to 19 age. Perhaps when we looked at the targets that were aim and consider for the children, you know, we may be able to slide into some of the numbers that are in the consider range because of children transmitting at a lower rate. So as time goes here in the next few weeks and the committee can look at this and we can begin putting numbers in there every week, I think that answer will become clear.
Thank you, Nurse Wheeler. And also, Ms. Willis, that's why we built in somewhat lag time between January 4th and January 15th so that we would kind of see how the, the data is trending naturally. And then that will assist us in which metrics that we really need to focus on as we get into the latter part of January, put forth a timeline, in terms of a plan for return.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi. Thank you. I'm going to build on a little bit of the questions that Rachel asked. So for this parent survey, what kind of response rate are you expecting? And what kind of response rate would be acceptable to you to make a decision? And I'll frame that question by being concerned that we don't want to make a decision based upon a group that may have very strong feelings, but may not be representative of the, of the actual parent population in the district.
Thank you, Dr. Body. I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. Burrows. That is an excellent question. So that's the reason why we very specifically chose the Office 365 method to push out the instrument. Because the way that we collect the data and because of questions that are embedded, we are actually able to pull that data by school. And so there are some specific, as we all know, some specific factors or components and/or ideologies that are specific to certain parent communities and school communities. We will work very closely with Ms. Benavides and also with Mr. Keck in terms of special populations as we are reviewing that data. In terms of a response rate, in all honesty, what we're looking for, because the, the parent response will definitely line up or sync with how we're going to need to address the needs of our special populations, which drives right into how we would need to look at staffing. So at this present time, there is no specific response rate that we have determined that we're looking for. And if there is any additional information outside of that, Dr. Body, as we continue to plan, that's definitely something as we are finalizing the instrument that we can report back to the Board of Education with.
I just, I, I think, I don't want to get into the weeds of this one, but I mean, if, if you, if you do not expect to get at least a third of the parents responding, then you might want to reconsider and think about a random sample because then you're only going to need about 370 respondents. And you have a much higher chance that that's going to be a valid representation for the entire parent population as opposed to doing a census approach where you get everybody, but it could be really, really skewed. But we can talk about that more. It's just, that's something to consider. I just don't know where our benchmarks are, what we expect to get. Secondly, the teacher survey that we did, what was the, do we have a breakdown of how they felt about returned, remaining remote versus a hybrid mode based on grade level, a split between the high school and the elementary? Was there a difference of opinion there?
There, yes. We actually have that data that is broken down very specifically, Dr. Burrows, not only by grade level but by school. And then we were able to even to look at it, I believe, at the high school by content area. So I don't have that data memorized this evening. But, but we, we delved very deeply into that. And that's why we wanted to survey our staff first. So we have that. And we already kind of have that disaggregated and know how we may need to move forward once we can couple that with the data from the families. That is a report by way of a PowerPoint presentation, Dr. Burrows, that we would, that we will be, we can provide that to the Board of Education via email.
That, that would be great. The last thing, and this is partly a question, also partly a comment. So, or essentially, I, I just want to make sure, and I suspect that this is the case anyway, but I feel like it needs to be said, that the, that the teachers are going to be very deeply involved in this planning process. And my question is, do we expect, do we anticipate that teachers will have some degree of individual choice about whether they're going to remain remote or whether they're going to be in person as, as we sort of move into this middle phase and we do a slow rollout?
That, that is one reason why, Dr. Burrows, that we framed the questions the way that we did. There are some, even now, when we had to go, due to the, the director from, from the governor, there were some staff members, even with being virtual, their preference was to be in their classroom, teaching from that mode. So we already somewhat know who is going to be more acclimated and want to do the return versus that population who are 100% hands down, no, I want to teach from home. So we have already started kind of gauging with our grade spans, how many, you know, what's going to be the breakdown for pre-K3 teachers, for 4-6 teachers, and for 7-12. So we've already started to pocket that out so that we will have a head start on that as we collect the data from our families.
Okay, that's great. I'm very glad to hear that. Thank you for all the great work.
You're welcome.
May, may I ask another question?
Dr. Body, if you could wait a moment, I'm going to go to Dr. Rodriguez and then Mr. Lopez, and then back to Dr. Body.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this dialogue. I think this is very, very important. I think that you have done excellent research. Maybe my comments or questions are coming later, but how our buildings are going to be ready for them? How, how the food and how are going to clean the buildings every week, every day? And maybe only half four days and then we clean the buildings. And I think the building's conditions had to be a stadium. You didn't. Anything done about buildings?
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. So this is part of the reason why we have put forth the recommendation on this evening in working with our logistics and metrics for return focus team. We did have representation from Dean Transportation, from Sadekso Magic. And so we already have talked about the, the length of time, which would be a minimum of four to six weeks, just to get all of our buildings ready. And then once we know that they're ready during the planning for that, yes, we've already started looking at the protocols for cleaning, the protocols for properly operating and providing to both staff and students the PPE that would need to be available on a consistent and daily basis to keep all of us safe. So all of that, we have had preliminary discussions on how we would handle that. And we will expand that as we put together the timeline in our, as we are planning for that return.
Thank you. Do we need to hire more people to work in the schools at that time? Or you think we have enough personnel to take care?
I believe that those, that, those, that would be conversations that would be determined by our Director of Operations along with our CFO. And we started those conversations, but I'll defer to Mr. Senicropi at this time if there's any additional information that we can provide as an update to that question.
No, there's no new information, Dr. Chapman. But I would just say that we have, we're in continual discussions with Dean and Sadekso in particular, just to make sure that we're all on the same page and they're, they're kept up to date on where we're at.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez.
Did you say me? First of all, I'm sorry that I had problems getting into the meeting earlier. My iPad just didn't want to work with me, but finally got in, so I'm glad to be here. And number two, I, I did wear a Sexton cap for a little bit, just in honor of Dr. Beverly and my honorary Lentsen Eastern. But to the business that we're talking about, very interesting, and thank you, team, for the work you do. I think you're doing everything very systematically, which is, which is good. Not just everything at the same time, we're trying to do everything. So, but my question really is, and, and I appreciate Dr. Body's comments and the other ones, but we, we know, or at least we, we probably have an idea, as Dr. Body indicated, the younger children or elementary schools, kindergartners, and, and maybe the lower, lower Ls would be the first ones to come to class. And I think that, that we need to work with our teachers, obviously with the representatives of the teachers, to ensure that we put every, that we're concerned about everybody. But our main focus, in a way, is the students, the students' well-being. So to try to be more realistic about bringing them earlier or at the, at the best possible time, obviously, following old protocols, and, and cleaning the buildings and so on and so forth. So as, as we talk about that, I just heard says that it takes four to six weeks to get that it takes four to six weeks to get all our buildings ready. Well, I don't think we need to focus on all the buildings. You know, if we start in a systemic way to, to prepare for our lower Ls to come in first and then work up. So I, I would, I would suggest that we start cleaning buildings at this time in, in preparation of our students coming in for, for in-person education, especially the younger kids. There's a lot of things going on. And, you know, in terms of, of their mental health and in terms of parents being able to help them, you know, that little, that young, I mean, you know, you don't know what else is going on in the family. So I, I would, I would hope that, that the administration and, and teacher groups would, would consider, you know, that and moving forward to accomplish that as, as the first phase of face-to-face instruction. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Lopez, Dr. Body?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is regarding the teacher survey. Did the teacher survey include a question about the, the percentage of teachers or the willingness of to, how, how should I say this? The number of teachers who would be willing to receive the vaccine when it's available? Like attitudes or beliefs about the vaccine amongst the teacher population?
That was not a question that was included on the survey, Dr. Body. So we don't have data, but that is data that we definitely, some additional data that we can easily collect from, very specifically from the instructional staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dr. Body. Any other questions from the board? Okay, once again, thank you very much, everybody. And Sam, I'll come back to you for a report from Superintendent.
Okay. Thank you, President Lawrence. As we near the end of the calendar year, I, I'm thinking that 2021 has to be an improvement over 2020. In fact, I think it's a pretty sure bet. And I understand now there are casinos that you could probably make a bet on some of this. So in Michigan, we have learned a lot this year, but it's, I think, one of the things we've learned that whatever normal is going to be, it certainly won't be normal, the normal we knew on March 12th. So it's up, it's up to Lansing and all school districts to be prepared and be ready for whatever is next. One of the things that I think is so fascinating is I've been amazed at all the creative things that our schools have done with their students, whether it's art project or Eastern Choir singing, the dance, Dance at Everett is just, it's amazing. And I want to just bring up one example. I sort of alluded to it when Mayor Shore was here. But I went to the Foster Community Center today. It's the site of one of our learning labs. And they had a celebration for their students, complete with the Kona ice cream food truck. And, you know, it was kind of cold out this afternoon. All these kids were not worried about it at all. And I'm sitting there, I got my hat on and my gloves and my arms over a thing, and they're eating ice cream and having a great time. But it was also very remarkable, too, the kids reminding each other to social distance and to wear masks. And these kids probably range in age from seven or eight to about 11 or 12, but they were, they were reminding each other of that. And it was nice, it was one thing, it was really nice because they were all outside and running around. And it was nice seeing kids just be kids again. It's been a long time since those of us with elementary school backgrounds like myself have had a chance to see that. And it kind of made me long for the good old days. It was all, and I did mention Major, Mayor Shore, he really know, he really threw a mean spiral a couple of different times. So I didn't want to get, I didn't want to get, you know, too far down the road with that. But lastly, I want to wish our staff, students and families and our community a peaceful and restful two weeks. Stay safe and stay healthy. That, well, I got to go to, did you knows? Sergio Keck, next.
Good evening. Did you know that Agwood New Tech Magnet School, Gardner International Magnet School, Luton Spanish Global School and Postock International Baccalaureate Immersion School are part of the One World Youth Clubs that exist throughout the United States, South America, Europe, Asia and Africa. One World is an international character building program for youth of all ages that generates civic commitment to local, national and global communities. The clubs are a network of globally aware youth leaders of character, knowledgeable of the world around them and capable of changing it for the better. Thank you and happy winter break.
Thank you, Mr. Keck, Ms. Cordelia Black.
Thank you. Did you know the Lansing School District's Holiday Hustle Step Challenge is in its second week and participating employees have walked approximately 30 million steps? And did you know about the Virtual Self-Care Series? This is a five-week program where participants are learning strategies for lowering stress and compassion fatigue and how to assess how well they are performing various self-care activities. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Black, Ms. Jennifer or Jennifer? I said that last week, too. Jessica Benavides.
Change my name if it'll make it easier.
Yeah, it might. No, I go the other way then.
Okay, all right. Well, good evening, everyone. Did you know that each week the district offers We Learn Wednesday topics for our staff? Topics include technology integration, mindfulness, grade book training and more. We Learn Wednesday is a great way to reach out to the staff weekly with topics that help to hone and develop their skills. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Benavides. Dr. Camila Diaz, you're up.
Thank you, Superintendent Senicropi. And good evening, everyone. Did you know that even in this remote learning environment, the Lansing School District is host to over 200 pre-service juniors and seniors from Michigan State University's teacher education programs? These college students are placed across 15 of our schools and offer support to students and teachers several hours each week. In addition, we are also hosting 32 student interns from several universities, including Michigan State, Ferris State, Central Michigan University, Western Governors University and Grand Valley State University. These college students spend each day with their mentors and students while studying elementary education, secondary education, special education, school social work, physical therapy, speech language therapy and mental health counseling. We are honored to be hosting this next generation of educators and partnering with so many area universities. We are also incredibly proud of the courageous educators in the Lansing School District who are guiding these future educators during an incredibly difficult time in their own careers. Can I just say Lansing educators rock. Thank you and have a great holiday break.
And finally, thank you, Dr. Diaz. Finally, Dr. Delsa Chapman.
Thank you, Superintendent Senicropi. Did you know that the Everett Viking Theater Guild will showcase its biggest cast performance ever on December 24 with an audio rendition of It's a Wonderful Life? The audio performance will be sent out via district email as well as posted to Facebook. So grab a blanket and a hot cup of cocoa on December 24 and let's support and listen to the great performance by our Everett Viking Guild. Happy holidays to everyone and have a very happy new year.
I may take a moment. Thank you, Dr. Chapman. You know, I, I was a graduate of Everett like a long time ago. I think we went on wagon train to school and things like that. The only sweatshirt I could find was my granddaughter's softball sweatshirt. So I don't know, I don't remember Everett's colors being navy blue and pink, but here you go, Everett.
Yay!
One last thing, we do have one title change. I just wanted to let audience know and the board know. John McGraw was the interim Director of Communications and on January 4th, he'll be the Director of Communications. So we will find, I don't know how long John's going to stay, but he can't leave till he finds another McGraw to take his place. I know that right now. We appreciate all the work that John and his staff do. So congratulations, John. That concludes my report, President Lawrence.
Thank you, Sam. Love the sweatshirt and congratulations to John McGraw. Moving on to routine matters and old business this evening, we are going to get to committee reports. Facilities Committee, Dr. Beverly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really appreciate this as my last Facilities Committee report. Facilities Committee met December 7th, discussed a number of items, including food service equipment, including cafeteria serving equipment at Sexton, $339,389 coming out of the food service budget. We reviewed, reviewed design plans for interior upgrades at North, including designs for pod and safety vest to view renovations. We reviewed design for interior upgrades at Wexford. Interior and exterior renovations also including plans for playground equipment. We reviewed design plans for electrical service upgrades at Agwood, including a really bad dad joke about keeping our architect energized, sparking interest. Those who are under that committee know exactly what I'm talking about. Includes, exactly. It wasn't my dad joke at all. Improvements to, to the distribution panel, to meters and to breakers. We discussed a proposal for a sale of the Ed Center. First proposal was rejected by administration, meeting with a possible suitor in January or February. I have to say I will not be in that meeting. Also discussed a proposal for land sale at Otto. This proposal is for property adjacent to the school. There's also additional proposal for the school itself, although there's some unclear financial viability for that proposal. We reviewed a design plan for door replacement at Hill. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly. Any questions for Dr. Beverly? Okay, Promise Committee, Mr. Lopez?
Ms. Willis had a question.
Oh, Mrs. Willis, go ahead.
Question for Mr. Beverly, Dr. Beverly, I'm sorry, just for the sheer purpose of dragging out his final meeting. Just to clear, just to clarify, we do have two Sexton bids for recommendation on Arkansas's agenda this evening. Can you just highlight those briefly, please?
Yeah, so the one, one issue is the one I just spoke around, cafeteria serving equipment and the other speaks to similar renovations, both bond and seeking funds. We discussed that in a prior Facilities Committee report at our December 7.
And the renovations at the Sexton for the Sexton Food Service Equipment, this is coming out of our bond and not our Food Service Fund. If I recall, we had a surplus in our Food Service Fund. So are we, are we, are we expending this out of the bond because it was written in the bond and so we're following that? Or like, is there, could we do? Because remember, we had an access in our audit and Food Service Fund. Is this, could this be a way to spin down that and then have other?
Correct. So a portion of these expenditures are coming out of the Food Service and another portion is coming out of bond.
Okay, I'm just looking to see.
In terms of, in terms of total project.
Okay. But this, this particular bid that we're approving today, it says the source will be the bond. So this full, this full, this full project is going to come out of bond, but there may be other pieces of this project that will come from Food Service.
Coming out of Food Service, correct.
Thank you. Okay, so that was a legit question. All right, thanks.
Okay, Promise Committee, Mr. Lopez.
Madam Chair, we, we have not met since the last time, so I do not have a report for tonight.
Okay, Personnel Committee, Mrs. Willis.
Thank you. And if it's permissible by the President, may I give both of my committee reports, both Personnel and Diversity Equity Committee? Thank you. And your packet says evening, you have your Personnel Report, one page of the Personnel Report for your information and the second page is for approval. We have two new hires, two tenures and one leave of absence for approval for us this evening. Segueing to the Equity Committee. Equity Committee has met since our last board meeting. We reviewed our top four firms and narrowed it down to two firms, of which we will be inviting to our January meeting for the purpose of having interviews and hopefully going through to final selection. Give me just one moment.
This doesn't happen when we're face to face.
Grandpa daycare is having too much fun in the background. Sorry about that. And so we narrowed down our, our committees, I'm sorry, our firms to our top three choices, which have been contacted and invited to our January meeting. And then we also reviewed and discussed the Kate, the social studies curriculum with the help of Dr. Chapman for presenting that to the group. The group understood, the committee understood the urgency, the need to approve the, the curriculum to at least get us up to speed, start the training. And it's making the recommendation that we do approve the curriculum with the understanding that pending the outcome of the audit that we may present amendment recommendations or additions to the, to the curriculum. But we need to start somewhere, at least with an update and then that'll be the curriculum that we'll use to audit and assess what changes need to be made. We did get an opportunity to share information from McGraw-Hill, which provided us access to actually view the digital textbooks, which after a little bit of clarification and getting into the login, I think folks were actually able to log in and view the material. The recommendation, barring that there's been any objections filed with Dr. Chapman, which I don't believe there have been any, the committee will be recommending that the board proceed with adopting that curriculum as presented during then December 3 meeting. Those were, conclude my reports. I will take any questions. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis. Policy Committee, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. The Policy Committee didn't meet, but I want to thank the two members, Mrs. Lijin and Dr. Beverly for their hard work during the, during the year and all the meetings and approval and presentation of the different policies during the year. But especially Dr. Beverly for staying in the committee for one more year after being Chairperson of the committee the previous years. They thank you very much for your support and for the continuation of the good work that you did. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Any questions for Dr. Rodriguez? Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda for this evening. Our consent agenda includes approval of the December 3 regular meeting minutes, December 10 information study session minutes, receipt and approval of the Treasurer's Report and expenditures and the Sexton renovations bid recommendations. May I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Beverly, supported by Dr. Burrows. Was that you?
No, it was me.
That was Mr. Lopez. Thank you, supported by Mr. Lopez. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
No comments, or no questions, Madam President, but I'm hoping we can have our summer report of the Treasurer's Report read by Dr. Beverly.
Absolutely. Okay, Dr. Burrows?
I found it, I was looking for it, it was buried. Okay. The detailed Treasurer's Report for the period of November 1st, 2020 through November 30th is attached to this evening's agenda. Following are some highlights. Beginning cash and investment balance was a little under 24 million. Total receipts were about 15 million as were disbursements. The ending general cash fund and investment balance at the end of the month was $24 million. And the general fund and cash investment balance is $3.8 million higher as compared to the same time last year. We did not receive any donations this month. Mrs. President, this concludes the Treasurer's Report. If people have any questions, I'm, I'll do my best to answer them. Um, Mrs. President, this concludes, uh, the treasurer's report. If people have any questions, I'm, I'll do my best to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Burrows. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Yes.
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Hagen? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Liljim?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. Ra- or Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on, we have no action items for this evening. We have no news or discussion items. However, I would like to add a little bit of new business and I would like to ask Dr. Beverly if he recently received a box and if you could get that. You may now open it.
I don't know, I taped it up pretty good. If he, if he gets it out pretty fast, he's already opened it. Uh-oh, he did.
He only taped one end, Sam.
That's true.
So for all of our attendees this evening who are unaware of what's going on, um, Dr. Brian Beverly will be concluding his board service at the end of tonight's meeting as he did not choose to run for reelection for his school board seat. Um, I have known Brian Beverly since before I was in high school. I was probably, I don't know, twelve when I met Brian Beverly. So I've known him um, for more than half my life and it has been, um, just an absolute pleasure to serve with you on this board. And I've learned so much from you and, um, had so much fun getting to know you as an adult and getting to know your lovely wife and your kids. Um, you're so smart, you're so gifted, and we're just really, really gonna miss you a lot. So in that box is a little token of the board's appreciation. I know you've gotten some other tokens of our appreciation in the mail. Um, if anyone else wants to say anything, if Dr. Beverly wants to say anything, uh, the floor is now open.
Well, I, I, I am the older one here, then I had to go first. Uh, Dr. Beverly and, and I know you and your friends for a long time and we always, um, were talking about education and, and joking and doing that. But working with you and face the realities that we faced the last few years and, and find solutions for the, for the students of the district. You had to have an special charisma to be in the board of education and you have it. You have done this, solving the problem, presenting solutions, and more be the leader in how we can run this district for the best of this community. For this leadership, for your charisma and this board, I will continue being your friend and still going like that the rest of my life. Thank you.
Madam President, if I may share a few things, and if you guys see anything come down my face, my eyeballs are sweating, I'm not crying. I just wanna make that very clear. I shared this, um, on my social media page earlier today, so I'm gonna read it in hopes that I can actually make it through it, so. Tonight is Dr. Brian Beverly's final meeting as trustee of Lansing School District Board of Education. I've had the incredible privilege of calling this dedicated servant and leader, both a colleague and a friend. I met Brian in nineteen ninety-nine when I was just eleven years old. This means that I have known him for twenty-one years, or seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five days, or sixty-five point two five percent of my life, which is a very long time. Over the years, Brian has been my friend, supporter, confidant, and mentor. I've had the opportunity to learn so many things from my dear friend. From your calm, steady, steadfast demeanor, you have supported me through a lot over the years. And we've been through a lot. If this year has taught me nothing else, it has taught me to honor people and tell them how much they mean to you while they are still here. While this chapter of our friendship may be closing, I am so happy that we'll still get to work together with, in many community projects. And I still expect to get my text from you and my texts of judgment when you drive past my house and see things, when you drive past my house. And I hope to continue to learn from you for years to come. For now, I will just share in the celebration of the time that you have dedicated to Lansing School District's family. Enjoy the extra time to spoil the ladies of your life. Crystal, Chelsea, Issa, Simone, and Gigi are pretty lucky. And I'm just counseled by the fact that I'll still get to see you. So thank you so much for the time. I'm so sad that I can't look across the horseshoe or get my good Dr. Brian Beverly hug one last time, but I've really enjoyed working with you and just know that I have a lot of respect and admiration of you and what you've dedicated to the kids of Lansing School District.
Thank you.
Missy, go ahead.
I just wanna share one of my favorite memories of joining the board. I used to sit right across from Brian. Uh, we were both kinda on the ends of the horseshoe. And sometimes, uh, things would happen that would make me wanna laugh and sometimes I would just catch your eye, Brian, and you would immediately lean back in your chair, put your hands behind you. Somehow that made it all so much harder not to break up laughing at an inappropriate time. Um, so I'm just always going to think of that every time I'm in the horseshoe. But I just also wanna thank you for, um, your classiness, um, your calmness, your patience, your kindness, your openness. Um, there have been many times when I think some things happened that were upsetting to us and you, you always remain so calm and so kind. Um, even though I know, like, other things might have been going, it must have been going on inside. Um, that coupled with all of your vast experience and knowledge that you, you know, I, I always had a, a lot of security when you were in the room about, you know, what, what you know and the things that you've been through and what you've seen. And I'm really gonna miss you.
Nathan?
I, I have not known Brian Beverly, um, for twenty years. Uh, I, I've only known Brian for four. Um, but they've been a really interesting, uh, four years that we've had. Um, we became friends when we became coworkers in a, in a very interesting and, and difficult time in my life personally, but I think in both of our lives professionally. Um, and we got through that together and it sounds like a lot of you had that experience with him while you were on the school board. But to put it quite simply, I would not be on the school board today if it were not for Brian. I would not have gotten nearly as much out of the time that I've had here. Um, this has been an immensely rewarding experience for me. Um, and that is all because of him. And I've learned a tremendous amount from him about how to be a school board member, but also just how to be a public official when it's your name on the ballot and you're the person representing someone, um, rather than just helping other people. So, um, Brian, I, I worry this sounds too much like a eulogy. You're not dying. Uh, you're still in Lansing, you're still an incredibly important part of this community. And I know you're not going anywhere, um, and I know we're gonna see a lot more of you in the future. So, so, but congratulations on this fantastic tenure you've had, you've had on the school board. And good luck.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Brian, I haven't had the privilege of knowing you as long as, uh, everyone else here. Um, but I really, really wanna thank you. When Nathan and I joined the board, you were one of the people that helped me feel comfortable as a new member. I didn't know what I was doing. I didn't know much about how to be a school board member and you made me feel like that was okay uh, as I was, uh, just, uh, trying to get my feet underneath me. And I really appreciate that. Um, you know, before, uh, before joining the school board, uh, what I knew about Bri- Brian Beverly was from his other half, and I'm not talking about his wife, I'm talking about Tony Baltimore. Uh, cuz, uh, I've known Tony a long time and I know that Tony and Brian have known each other ever since they were practically babies. Uh, so I was really excited, uh, to get to work with Brian, uh, when I joined the school board. And, uh, like Nathan said, I look forward to continuing interactions with you, uh, in and around town, especially as things, uh, start to open up here again. So thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes. Well, Brian, um, I've known you a long time, um, not as close friends, but I've known you and I mentioned through your dad, okay? And, um, you've always been involved with community activity, uh, representing, being part of, uh, uh, doing the work that needs to be done. So, uh, knowing you then and knowing, uh, really knowing, uh, young people, um, who have gone through the school district and who have become successful, like three of you that we have on this board, that's, that's, that's what makes us, what makes our job, you know, worthwhile. Because, um, we see the fruits of, of the work of, of the institution and, and, and it really speaks well. And when you, when you represent Lansing School District, we're in good hands because you do a great job. Um, from back when you were younger, I think you were maybe not even twenty when I met you, um, uh, through your dad, but, uh, I kept track of you and, uh, and seeing your progress and certainly your achievements in education and, and your doctorate. So congratulations. Thank you for being a great colleague on this board. And, um, like, um, I think Dr. Burrows said, you're not going anywhere. You're still with us and you just put in your time and, uh, we appreciate that. And, and I wish you nothing but the best. And I think you, you will continue to grow, learn, and, and become more of a, of, of a factor in, in our community. Cuz I think you will stay in Lansing. I don't think you're going much any further. Uh, and that's, and that's the, the good thing. So thank you very much. Good luck and come visit us often.
Thanks, Mrs. Willis. Okay, I was so excited to talk about Dr. Beverly that I was remiss and jumped right over two motions that we need to make tonight. Mrs. Willis, would you care to make a motion?
Sure, but I'm not sure Dr. Beverly, um, turned his mic on right before. I don't know if you wanna give him a chance to, to say something before we go back to business. If that's okay with you, Madam President.
Thank you. I do, I, I did, uh, prepare some remarks because, uh, trying to go off the cuff would have been probably too emotional. Many of you know I've decided to not run for reelection, um, based on some personal reasons, wanting to uh, pour more into, uh, my family, um, as well as pursue some, uh, other opportunities, um, around time and on campus. Uh, I'm forever grateful for my experience on the board. As you know, this district has meant a lot to me and my family. My mom and her siblings and I all graduated from the only real high school in the land, A W Sexton, should have been a big red. My father showed me what true leadership can look like as a longtime administrator in the district. My wife has worked in the district and even now my fifth grader is enjoying her time previously at Cumberland and now at Patengill. And as Dr. Body mentioned, my best friend Tony Baltimore, who ran my campaign, is an alum of some school on the south side that shall remain nameless. I'm thankful for all the sacrifices my family has made to make my service on the board possible. I walk away this year in bittersweet fashion. I've taken this role as trustee to heart and I'm so thankful for the opportunity to serve. There is still much work to be done and I am encouraged by the commitment of my colleagues and the administration in achieving the goals we all have for our schools. However, I am also extremely proud of the work we've accomplished together over the past six years. In my own humble opinion, I think the district is in a better place today than when I first joined the board. Improvements in student performance, graduation rates, student behavior are the result of heavy lifting on the part of the executive team, staff, and students alike. Upgrades of facilities thanks to a re-energized community who have put both their faith and their resources behind our mission to enhance the learning environment for all of our scholars. I believe a lot of the district's current success is rooted in the intentional inclusive process that led to our strategic plan. Kudos to the previous administration in Yvonne Kamal Kanu for guiding the shift towards pathways to the promise. This innovative approach to a focus on student interest is a model that a number of districts have incorporated aspects into their current programmatic offerings. Further, the current administration's super, superintendents and the corporate navigating the shift towards remote instruction with an inclusive approach and leadership that will be remembered in our community for years to come. Thank you to the school leaders who pour all that they have into their staff and students every day. Thank you to all of the educators in our district. Your passion and commitment are only matched by the expertise you impart on each and every one of our students. Further, thanks to my previous colleagues, Peter, Peter Spatafor and Myra Ford for all of their contributions to the district and our city. Additionally, I wish Ms. Robin Moore all the best as she joins the horseshoe. Thank you to Nina for her ever-present emphasis on climate and culture. To Missy for always uplifting the potential for art in our district. To Yemo for highlighting the Lansing promise and the benefits for our students. Farhan for sharing the physical and emotional realities he sees in his patients and our students. To Nathan for pushing us on data-driven decision-making. To Amy for reminding us all of our social media presence. To Rachel for making me proud at every meeting as both a former student and a friend. To Gabe for leading like, like only true big reds can. And a special thank you to both our president and vice president. And Rachel for supporting me as friends through life's ups and downs, including the loss of my dear Aunt Shirley Rogers. I've learned so much from you all and look forward to continued success for our district under your stewardship. Yet, but beyond all of the relationships and steps towards success we've taken over the last six years, I'm walking away thinking of all the graduates that I met on various commitment stages, commencement stages. They're the embodiment of all that is great about this district and our community. I promise to continue to find ways to support and encourage them and future graduates in leading the way and making a difference right here at home. Six years ago, I dreamed that I could play even a small part in bringing the district back to a place of prominence. It was those graduates and those still to come who helped get me there. Thank you all. I don't know if I want to make a motion. How are we supposed to fuck?
Close the screen.
Let Mr. Dr. Beverly make the final motion.
Dr. Beverly, make a motion, or two.
Try and find it. Here we go. I moved at the Board of Education and adopt McGraw Hill's social studies materials for grades seven through twelve.
Support.
It's been moved by Dr. Beverly, supported by Dr. Burrows. Any questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Yes.
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Hagen? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Liljim?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez? Yes, okay. Uh, Dr. Re- Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
I did say yes.
Thank you. Dr. Beverly, do you have one final motion for us?
I do. I moved at the Board of Education, accept the recommendation of the Beyond Screen to Screen Committee as presented.
Support.
It's been moved by Dr. Beverly, supported by Dr. Burrows. Any questions or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Beverly?
Yeah.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Hagen? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Liljim?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thanks again. Thanks again for all of your work, everybody. Brian, I'm sure I'll text you like 71 times tonight, so talk to you in a minute. With no further business before the board, at 7:34, we are adjourned.
Wait, 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 wait.
Yes, Dr. Rodriguez. Oh my God, I'm so sorry. I forgot your report for a second. Let's just pretend that didn't happen. Dr. Rodriguez, go ahead.
We didn't finish with Dr. Beverly yet.
You're right. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Free pandemic tutoring services program for the Lansing School District students, grades four to 12. Pandemic Tutoring Services is a volunteer organization created to supply addition, additional one-on-one and in-mold group services to students for free as they adapt to learning online. This organization consists of Michigan State University students with a mission to support learning within the Lansing School District for the duration of the coronavirus pandemic. Free tutoring services for students, grade four to 12 in the Lansing School District via video in math and English with other subjects possible based on request. For more information and to sign up, please visit www.lansingschools.net/barlasstutor. Lansing School District students, Hamteach Studios is offering great opportunities during the winter break with courses in 3D modeling, audio and video production. See the Lansing School District Facebook page or website for more details. I attended the inauguration of that program and it's fantastic. I asked them, maybe the administration to send more information to the high school students. Thursday, December 17, 2020, parents, university, I think that is already today is 7. Pass, right. Monday, December 21st, 2020 to January 1st, 2021, no school, winter break. For all of us, Thursday, January 7th, 2021, first virtual regular board meeting at 6:00 PM. That concludes all the announcements. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Lopez?
Yeah, this is for Lynette. Where is she?
Right next, next to you.
I got, I got this. It's not the high school, but it's the Hill Center. And check this out. The Wesleyco Panthers. So I have something in common with Lansing even before I came, so that's for you. And also, if I may, Madam Chair. I want to say this to all of you who are watching this this district school. A happy New Year and a prosperous year. And don't lose your expectations. We're going to go back to classes, to classes, or to in person. Hopefully, sooner or later, in 2021. So gracias and good night and we'll see you next year. Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. And I think everybody, whatever you and the administration gave us today for the celebration of the holidays and for your work and other people that were involved. And I wish to all of you and your families a happy, happy holidays.
Thanks, Dr. Rodriguez.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Body?
I want to share with the board, not so much the board, but the public as well, really, that I'm going to be receiving the COVID-19 vaccine on Tuesday. This upcoming Tuesday. As a physician who takes care of children in the hospital, my second job is a pediatric hospitalist at Sparrow on the weekends and I take care of children and I have taken care of children who are positive and hospitalized with COVID. And so physicians in the community are already receiving the vaccine and we will be receiving the vaccine here in the next week. And so my intention or the purpose behind sharing that with the public is that the doctors are getting this first. I know that there are some people that are scared about getting it. They don't think that the studies were long enough, but I want to I want to reassure everyone that the vaccine is safe, the data is convincing. And we're not going to recommend that you do anything that we haven't done for ourselves. So when the vaccine is available to the general public, I really strongly encourage every single one of you to get it. Because that's how we're going to be able to develop the herd immunity we need to really get back to living the lives we all want to live. So thank you for the opportunity to share that.
Thanks, Dr. Body. Good luck. We'll be anxious to hear about your experience. It's great. Any other comments?
Thank you for the
Happy holidays, everyone.
You're welcome. Okay, okay, let's try this again with no further business before the board this time. 7:40, we are adjourned and I'll see you in January.